Hello. All right. I didn't even remember my voice. Hey, this is Seattle. Oh, good. Been out there for a while. Yeah.
Tom, President. I don't remember anything. I don't remember anything. What people. Listen, I don't get down that way. I live kind of near Highland. So. Well, there's a. You know. It's a. Yeah. They should be back there. I can see. Did I have the person? Thank you. Dylan. So. He never should have. Yes. We got rid of our. Oh, apparently. Yeah. So. I was beginning to. I'm sure what's. It's all. Okay. Autumn. Somebody else. Yes. My first thought is. Yeah. It's. Uh, no. It's not. It's. From myself. They wanted to. Not. You know. We just made it. That's. Again. Everybody is saying. I think it's right there. I always want more. To be good job. I had it too many. They're not there. Oh. It's so. What's that? Whatever. That you need. A lot. Just. I think. But then maybe go like. Yeah. You know. There's no time. You know. That. Thank you. I'm. I'm. There. I'm. I'm. Sure. There's. Yeah. I'm certain. There's. There's. Oh. No. I mean. Now. He's on that. Man, I love him a lot. No, but there's. No. Street right here. It's not. They're. So. I'm. The. Sure. You mean by. By. Well, I'm. Oh, look. I'm. My. Right in the research. So. I'm. This is. Thanks. Yeah. I want to. It's. So. I'm. Well, I'm. Your. Good. Yeah. We. Found. The. I. I'm. We have one. A million. I think. One. Back. Ready? Yeah. No. Wait.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the town council regular meeting for November seventh to order. We'll ask the clerk treasurer to please call, roll.
Councillor Shinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Nellens.
Present. At this point, I'd like to ask you to rise for the moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That takes us up to the public comment. All public comments are limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for this public comment section. All speakers must sign in. The public speaker sign in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, the council may allow the public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but it is not required to do so. All rules for the public comment are posted outside the main meeting room. So with that, I'll open up the open to the public session. And those that have signed in already, please line up. And anyone else after, welcome after that.
Mr. President, could we move that podium so I can see the speakers, please?
Very good.
Thank you.
So. Good. Good.
Thank you, Chris.
Hello, gentlemen. My name's Christopher Pitts. I'm here in reference to the earlier request that we get some assistance with some barriers at the Renaissance condos for the railroad tracks. I provided today Jonathan Peterson, a guide that's from the Department of Transportation, Office of Railroad Safety. And it's a guide for communities to figure out whether. Whether controls are necessary. And it also states that the best form of controls are engineering controls. Um, the Office of Railroad Safety's website states that. The number one cause of railroad fatalities is people trespassing at places other than pedestrian or road crossings. Um, I'm real concerned about safety in our community and this particular hazard. I really like some help from the board somehow to make. To make this new addition to our community safer. I brought a bunch of my neighbors here. Um, and and we're all of like mind here.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pitts, what was your address, please?
Eighty-four forty-five Manor Avenue.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I can acknowledge I did receive an email which I'm going forward to all number of councils. Has a link in there apparently to a study and I've spoken with folks here at the Manor Condom names. I'm also concerned about saving issues that they. It brings. I think there's, I think the council should consider providing some assistance and possibly installing a barrier. So I will send that to everyone right now.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Thomas. I also live in Conville Building at eight four four five Manor Avenue. And. Um, along with Chris, I have same members of our Manor Avenue Safety Group. So just to recap the meeting we had formally last Friday, we have Councilman Shinkin, Councilman Gardner, Town Manager, City Works Manager, inside our garage bar voting to talk about this. There's some things that came up. One is the city of Munster is unwilling to install the chandling safety fence, although they'd be willing to help us with landscaping. Uh, we're concerned about children playing on the tracks. I have a video if that one of our owners showed if he was likely to send it to one of you, you can hold your staff to you to see. One of the concerns is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it fourteen trains down, fourteen trains back, truck to work? Give me a number. I feel.
That's.
I believe that's the total day traffic, but I would, I will refer to the frequently asked question document that we'll be putting on online fairly shortly.
Okay, so we're surprised there are a lot more trains than we expected. Um, also, um, I'm looking at how much the cost is to install a safety fence. Not only from the apartment complex, just their parking lot is not totally covered by a barrier, all the way through eighty-four hundred Manor Avenue. And I think the cost is a small price to pay for the protection of our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Adder, could you make sure that microphone's on, please? There we go. Thank you so much.
Hi, Mike Engler, one thirteen Beverly Place, just here to provide an update as to where we are in the parkway. Uh, thank you all for your support as well as Public Works for all they've done in transforming or terraforming is a better way to put it. Our entire parkway, it's looks like it's ready to go, ready to plant seed, and we're really going to plant trees. So we're looking forward to you guys' support and maybe get this done before the end of the year. And again, thank you all summer for the help you provided us.
Thanks for the update. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Castle, five one two Evergreen Lane. I was just checking on the surface work on the project by my house and on evergreen, the curbing, the drainage, and all of that, if that's going to get started. Also, the neighbors were asking me because there was a party out there reline and everything, re, you know, putting numbers in and white paint and everything. So I'm just doing follow up on this.
Certainly, we have that on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Good evening. Tom Jurich, eighteen thirty-nine Magnolia. Um, I'm glad I followed exactly who I followed. The Beverly Project. Previous council did it without input from the citizens, and now this council is trying to fix what wasn't done correctly. I have concern about the rail line as well. I know some people who live in that area, I'm familiar with the area. If the council has to go back and fix something they don't do now in terms of helping to get barriers there, it's going to be because of a tragedy, not because there's weeds and people can't see. There's likely going to be a child that gets killed. I hope you'll listen to what everyone's telling you here. Um, I'm pretty certain that most people in the town would support spending a little money to do this. If the town is going to have a brand shiny new, spanking new rail line, let's do it right. Let's get all the details correct, especially safety, let's not overlook safety. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come up and speak during the open to the public session? This would be the opportunity to speak on any community items. Seeing no one, I will close the open to the public session. Do we have any reports?
We did have some electronic emails sent over the last two plus weeks. So again, supporting keeping Bridge Road four lanes. There was a request to look at the speed limit on White Oak in response to the reduction of speed on Franlin. Again, supporting not getting involved with the Center for Visual and Performing Arts and to look at speeders on Assalia.
Thank you. Thank you. And that takes us up to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion.
Mr. President, I'm going to make an objection. I'd like to pull out the vouchers for the firms Wesleyan Bennett and Icon and Icon to have those treated separately, please.
All right. So noted. Any other, well, we need to have a motion to have a discussion.
Well, I would make a motion that we accept the consent agenda. Well, as presented with the deletion of. Wesleyan Bennett and Icon and Icon invoices.
I'll second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Statement, please call the roll.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hoppers.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. Um, Council President, I'd like to make a motion to pay legal fees for Wesleyan and Bennett and Icon and Icon.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second with respect to paying bills. Um, any further comments, questions? Statement, please call the roll.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yep.
Councillor Hoppers.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
No.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. This takes us up to old business. We have no old business. That takes us up into new business and resolution twenty-one forty.
Resolution twenty-one forty is to provide an extension for the interim town manager. Um, this will be the second extension that will take through. It's about to.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one forty as presented.
And I'll second. We have a motion, we have a second further discussion, comments. Statement, please call the roll.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hoppers.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. Takes us up to item B ordinance nineteen sixty-eight.
This is for an additional appropriation. Um, I'm not sure, but I'm hoping that this is going to be the last one for this year. Um, it's for five different funds. And one is, well, maybe for the parking meter fund in order to pay the. We anticipate that we will be needing to pay Tru and Golf for them to have a proper cash flow to start the year. So this is partly for that. Uh, also in one in the economic development fund for thirty thousand dollars to pay for the other professional services related to the zoning code rollback. Zero maintenance fund needs thirty thousand for the MS four contract work being done. Uh, the park donation fund needs one, they were the little tiny river basin is going to be reimbursing them for the purchase of nine thousand dollars worth of trees. Uh, so, but they don't have enough appropriations to make the purchase in the first place. So that one is going to end up being a wash. Police Department acquired some new software over the last month, so the technology fund needs big appropriations to cover it. Uh, this follows the same procedure. Uh, ordinance, here the ordinance tonight, have a public hearing at the November eighteenth meeting and hopefully adopt it.
Very good. Do we have support for this?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we hear proposed ordinance nineteen sixty-eight for additional appropriations on first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading for November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I said, I second that.
Thank you. There any further questions, comments? Statement, please call the roll.
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hoppers.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. Takes us up to item C ordinance nineteen sixty-nine.
This is an ordinance to raise the water rates. The water rates are currently set through twenty twenty-five. This would cover them from twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight. It would be, uh, make sure I get it right. And the first year would be a nine percent increase, but it would be a nine percent increase over three years, so about a three percent increase each year. Uh, this is necessary for the various capital improvement projects that need to happen, the operation maintenance of the water system in general. This will help us stay, keep us current with the ongoing costs, the things that we know we will need to have. Uh, and it provides a reliable statement of what those rates are going to be for the next, going through twenty twenty-eight. Uh, there will be, there's a need to have a public hearing for the water rates that will happen on December second.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion on this?
Before I make a motion, I just want to clarify, um, if the public hearing is going to be on December second, is that when the second reading would also be?
Yes. Originally, we thought it would happen on the, all of that would happen on the eighteenth, but there was an issue with the advertisement. So it's going to happen on December second, second people happen on the spot.
Okay. So then I will make a motion to hear ordinance nineteen sixty-nine and first reading as presented and set second reading and public hearing for December second, two thousand twenty-four.
For the. Yes. And I'll second that. We have a motion, we have a second, any comments?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to weigh in. Last year, oh, we had a municipal campaign and during that campaign, I door knocked many homes in Munster. One of the things that I heard often was a concern about the increase in water rates and sewer rates and whatnot. And, uh, I recall door knocking on many residents who are on fixed incomes. In fact, one in particular was the mother of a person that I went to high school. And she invited me in and she shared with me an update about her life and she asked me, Jonathan, it's a struggle. Get by. Please look out for me when it comes to things like this. And I promised her I would. So I want to share with you some concerns I have. Number of weeks ago, few weeks ago, when this water and sewer rate increases were being put forward by staff, I reached out and I sent an email to clerk treasurer and I said, please get me these studies that we are going to rely on so that I can review them with enough time, develop questions and, uh, and assure myself what we're doing there. And. I asked in particular that I be giving these studies with enough time before we actually put these things up for a vote. Last week, we had what's called an agenda review. And for the folks out in the audience, council typically meets a week before, the Wednesday before a council meeting to review things on the agenda. We did not have those studies at the time. And the rate increases were announced and we were told this has to be done. And after that meeting, I put on an email asking for those studies to be transferred. I did get some of the studies the next day and then I got more information a couple of days ago. Now, last night, Councilman Shinkin himself and I were at a dinner. And, um, I was seated at a different table and it turns out I was seated with a couple of employees of Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly is the firm that did the rate studies. And I asked them, in your experience, is it typical for the increases to be announced and then the studies to follow the increase? And the two employees went white and said, no, that's not how we see it done. And then I turned to a person, the person sitting next to me, who is a councilman from a neighboring community. And I asked him, how do you do, uh, sewer and water increases? And he explained, well, it's a multi-step process where there is, they actually have another committee that will consider this, they get the studies, that committee reviews those, those studies. And then it gets passed to the council, they get all that, and there's more than enough time for questions to be asked and, uh, and staff to be interviewed and, and. Assurances that we are doing our job as custodians of the town's check. That's not how it's happened. There's another thing that has caught my attention about these increases. Last week. On town hall, I ran into State Representative Andrade during the campaign. And State Representative Andrade, uh, lives on White Oak. He lives two houses away from my parents. And in a very deadpan moment, he looked at me and said, Jonathan, you know, this work on wide open Chestnut, it could have been done better. Yeah. I think it could have been done better. And why is that important? Because we were told last Wednesday that we have two choices, increase rates or cut costs. And I think before we consider voting on this, we ought to have a conversation about cutting costs. We have had no conversation about cutting costs. I think we owe that to our senior citizens and other residents who are on fixed incomes. We are pushing through this on a first reading tonight, and we have not had an opportunity to go through a process that other communities do. We have not had an opportunity to see if there's opportunities to cut costs, and I know that work on White Oak and Chestnut suggests that there's plenty of opportunities to cut costs. I cannot support this at this time until we get these serious questions answered.
President Nellens, um, we were at the same meeting, Jonathan didn't bring that up to us yesterday. Um, I wish he would have after he spoke with the two people from Baker and Tilly and the councilmen, but he left so soon that we didn't have time to talk. Um, we spoke about this at the agenda meeting. Raising sewer rates, water rates pays for our infrastructure of sewer lines. It can't come out of any other budget except for that budget. So if we're going to look at cutting costs, it's going to start in Bob's department in Public Works, getting rid of employees, because that's the only way we're going to be able to cut costs, is getting rid of services for the town of Munster and employees. And I don't think the, uh, the residents want that as well. Let me ask this question, is this the first reading?
This is the first reading.
This first reading. It's the first reading, so there will be a second reading.
Yes, there will. As a public hearing.
And a public hearing.
On the water rates and a public hearing as well, December second.
So at this point, have we received all the reports that we have regarding this?
Mm-hmm.
Been sent out?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to say that we need to move forward on this first reading. There will be a second reading and a public hearing, and that will also give us further time to study this. And if it is so proven that this is incorrect, well, then that can be changed. I do know in years past that the water department hasn't had enough money to pay for its expense down at the public works site. Money had to be borrowed from other departments. Am I close on that?
Uh, somewhat.
Somewhat.
We were, we were not, the rates were not being increased. We would, we would have a rate increase and then not increase the rate again for a number of years. And so we were not keeping up with the basic costs. Then there was this recognition of, there's a lot of infrastructure that had not been, that needed to be taken care of. Water mains needing to be replaced. Water towers needing to be refurbished, that type of thing, equipment that needed to be replaced. There was a cost of service study that was done in twenty twenty-one, which led to the rates that were determined for twenty twenty-two that carry us through twenty twenty-five. When that happened, it was a conscious decision that we would set the rates for a number of years so that we residents could count on, we could tell the residents, here's what your rates are going to be for these coming years. The problem with, in my opinion, the problem with that particular set of rates was they went up and down. You had a huge increase and the next year it would be lower and the next year it'd be up high and just up and down. One of the better things about this is now we're getting ourselves to a position where we can have a more steady rate increase that's not so dramatic and, and difficult to plan for.
Mr. President, if I could also add, um, the three percent increase that we're receiving or that, that has been proposed here in the year twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, doesn't our water that we're receiving from the city of Hammond, isn't that, aren't we also on a ten-year contract with that, that there's continual increases each year for that?
The, the rate doesn't increase each year, but we are on a contract with them where, where we have to. Then there is a contract with them, and I don't think that it raises every year. I have to double check. You don't seem to think that that's right.
I, I.
Look at your face.
I, I would ask you to look at that contract. I believe that that rate increases each year, uh, for the ten years.
Okay. Um, and I know that Baker Tilly had all of that information and was using that when they did their study.
I, I, I would also, uh, ask Councilperson Peterson, the, the people you talked with at Baker Tilly yesterday over dinner, um, what type of role do they have with Baker Tilly?
Uh, they're not, they're not specifically in water studies. They, they confirm that, but they shared with me that they, uh, they interact with people that do this. And it is their experience that the, the reports are disseminated to, uh, respected council, um, before these conversations occurred so that study, that, that the council can study it, review it. And, and again, the councilman that was sitting next to me confirmed as much. In fact, that community has a much more extensive process by which they undertake these reviews before they, they tee up these ordinances. So again, we didn't follow a process. Um, it was announced and then we got the studies and with the election, uh, I don't know, I, I don't know about the other members of the council, but I had limited time and availability to, to really get into this. And again, I feel that as an elected official, it is my responsibility to be able to explain to folks in our community, particularly the folks on fixed income, why we are increasing these rates when rate increases like this can have a significant impact when your income doesn't increase at the rates that these great sewer and water and sanitary rates are increased.
Mr. President, I, I think it's important that we continue moving forward with this. Uh, we certainly have the study that's in front of us for the length of discussion that we can have. Uh, again, certainly, yes, there was an election yesterday, but certainly town business and receiving email that you see, that we received on Friday. Um, I was able to look it over, over the weekend. Um, and certainly, um, town business is very important and campaigning, while it's important, uh, none of us up here were on a campaign this, this past Tuesday. And certainly looking at the documentation about this water study, uh, we were able to do over the weekend. In fact, I was traveling over the week and I was able to review the study. Um, so I, I think the advantage, again, I, I do not want to see the town like we were faced two years ago or four years ago. Um. The town like we were faced, uh, two years ago or four years ago, um, with prior councils not. Acting on a regular annual small increase and then having to increase the water rates twenty nine percent in one year. I don't wanna see that happen again. I think a slow, steady approach to this is the right way to go. And I do think that allowing us the next month to review documentation can allow us to have further questions. And further looks at this, um, and, and so I, I support this in, in the first read.
I, I would, Mr. Council President, I would like to respond briefly. It is, it has been suggested that there will be staff layoffs. Again, there has been absolutely no conversation about the possibility of more effective. Management of, of these capital resources. There's been zero conversation about it. I think this is nothing more than an assumption that we have to lay off people. I don't know that. And I don't know anybody here on the council that can say something like that. And it's because we haven't actually looked into this. Again, if other communities take a more measured thought to approach, why can't Munster? And I think that's the way we should do it. Um, I would, I would urge that we hold this over. Have conversations about it, and then if there's a commitment to do this, that's when we do it. Uh, so I'm going to vote against the first reading tonight because I think we are racing this process forward.
All right, any other, we need to have, we really need to have a motion here.
All right, I'm sorry. Yes, Counselor.
I was just gonna make a comment that I, I, though it's frustrating that, that rates go up, everything kinda goes up. Uh, we, we try to make it manageable by hiring a, an expert company to look at these, uh, numbers to, to make decisions. That can be digestible, that can be tolerable, um, you know, but the idea here is that we have the money going forward. In the, in the past, we, we approved the resolution to, to bring on some equipment that we, that's gonna help us to be more forward and proactive with. Diagnosing problems in the, in the water mains, diagnosing problems with the delivery of water. And what we're trying to do is, uh, avert a massive problem that could break down and people lose service. So with that in mind, you know, we're trying to make this as tolerable and digestible as possible. And, you know, as everybody here and I, and maybe I'm, I'm the different, but I get handed a pile of numbers. And I'm not a forensic accounting accountant, I'm not, uh, an expert on water rates, but I look at it, I need people like. Uh, Ms. Abbott to help me, you know, interpret this stuff, let alone Baker Tilly explaining things to me. That, that I can make sense of it. But we're not intending to do things to cripple, you know, people, uh, that are fixed incomes or otherwise. We're just trying to keep this town flowing, pun intended, as smoothly as possible. That's all I have to say.
Well, certainly it's a sensitive issue. Uh, there are a number of us that are on fixed incomes. And I certainly can appreciate that. And again, I'm going to suggest that we move forward on this first reading. We will have work studies in between, agenda reviews to discuss the facts and the information. And certainly I, I rely on the Cliff Treasures Department to oversee what's going on. And again, I don't wanna be behind the eight ball again, where we don't have the money to do things. It, it's important that we maintain our infrastructure. So with that, I'd like to, uh, call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin. Counselor Hopper. Counselor Gardner. Counselor Peterson. Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to, uh, item D, which is, um. The stormwater rate increase.
So the stormwater went through a similar process that the water did in order to get their, um, the rates that we are currently under. Uh, the, the cost of service study, same idea, um. That full rate wasn't, uh, the full rate that had been recommended at that time was not accepted by council. They chose to do a smaller rate. Uh, and that has meant that they have not been able to do as many of the things on the stormwater side as they might otherwise have done. Uh, the Baker Tilly report shows that recommends a three and a half percent rate increase for each of the years twenty two, twenty twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight. Uh, this would be first reading that we're asking to have, second reading could be on November eighteenth. There is no requirement for a public hearing on the stormwater rate.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to hear ordinance nineteen seventy on first reading as presented and set second reading for November eighteenth to twenty twenty four.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion.
Mr. President, I reiterate my earlier comments. I think this ordinance suffers from the same defects. As the water rating consortiums.
Other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin. Counselor Hopper. Counselor Gardner. Counselor Peterson. Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Takes us up to item E, which is, uh, ordinance nineteen seventy one, solid waste collection rate increase.
This is for the garbage collection, garbage and recycling collection fee that is paid on the, for the weekly collection that's paid on the monthly bill. Uh, this would require an eight percent increase in twenty twenty five with three and a half percent. For each of the years twenty twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight. Uh, we have a contract for home disposal to do the collection. This is the largest expense that comes out of that fund. We know that those rates are gonna go up four percent next year. That contract is, we're on the last year's option on that contract, uh, so it's. We're, we're, I mean, we can't know with for certainty what the subsequent years will be for that one. Um, this is to, this fee is about the only sort of revenue that goes into this fund. We are asking for first reading on this evening, second reading can happen at the next meeting, there is no requirement for a public hearing.
And then other expenses that come out of that fund?
This is for the collection, the weekly collection. It's also to maintain the landfill. Uh, the, the well field that has.
Maintenance.
That has to be maintained. We know that there is work that, that is going to need to be done. You've approved some repair work earlier. Two, three times earlier this year. Right now that we're waiting to see how did that, it was with the well field and they fixed one thing. But they weren't certain if that was gonna fix it or not, and there was a, there's a waiting period to see how does the methane move through the system first. We are anticipating that they're gonna come back with a need to do more work there. Next year, the new generator will be installed, there will be costs associated with, um, removing the old generator. As well as engineering work to place the new one. So we, we, all of those were contemplated in this rate study. As well as the known increase with the home disposal contract.
All right, other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to hear ordinance nineteen seventy one on the first reading as presented and set second reading for. November eighteen, twenty twenty four.
And I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All right, further comments?
Mr. President, I, again, on this ordinance as well, I reiterate my earlier comments and concerns about. Late timing of information and the lack of discussion about cost, cut costs.
All right. Other comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin. Counselor Hopper. Counselor Gardner. Counselor Peterson. Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to, uh, the revision, Impact Revision.
Impact provides our IT services and they do a regular true-up of the number of devices that they are maintaining. Um, and they have come back, uh, increasing the monthly fee we paid by a hundred and twenty eight dollars and seventy two cents.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised monthly invoice cost for Impact, net working that it costs not to exceed sixteen thousand eighty five dollars and twenty eight cents.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin. Counselor Hopper. Counselor Gardner. Counselor Peterson. Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Item G is lease agreement with the school town for tennis courts.
So the school town, um, approached the town of Munster, they're looking to woo the tennis courts that are currently located between the two. Blue buildings at the high school and middle school and locate them in the, in the open space that is around the community pool. Um, this is an agreement that would allow them to use that space. There is, there are two things that are still pending on it. Uh, one is the exact legal description of the land that would be used. And the other, there's a question regarding liability insurance and what that level should be. Um, and my understanding is that the, uh. That the school town is reviewing some parts of that, and so you're gonna be asked to approve the form of this pending. Those pieces of information.
Council President, I'd like to prove the general, or make a motion to approve the general form of the lease agreement. By in between the town of Munster and Park Board's recreation and the town of Munster and the school town of Munster pending. The legal description and insurance amount.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further questions, discussion?
Mr. President, the clarification, the insurance amount, we're talking about the, the dollar amount.
Yes, so at the agenda review, Mr. Peter, if the original amount in the agreement says three million dollars, it's a, it's a. Half of liability insurance. Mr. Peterson suggested that he would like to see that number be five million dollars. Uh, that was conveyed to the school town, uh, the next day.
This was, I, I, I think we started a million and I suggested three million. That's my recollection. But.
I, I remember that.
Yeah, I think we started, and, and the, the form of the lease is a million. And my experience is, is that the number seems to be three million dollars.
I stand corrected. I sent the email to the school town attorney the next day. So. You don't have the email in front of me, I was doing that from memory, but.
My, my suggestion is, is I think common practice nowadays, the number's three million, but again. End of the day with, with the deductibles and back when you're municipal corporations, we pay one way or the other. So, I, I'm sure that staff can work this out, come to appropriate determination, what that number needs to be.
You made the motion.
And that won't move forward till we have all those detailed ironed out.
It's on there.
Well, when we have, when we have that ironed out, the, the document that you see now. That number will be changed to reflect that, and at that point you'll be asked to sign it. But you're asked to approve it now, pending those.
And then those details. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I do have a question. Would, would the, would the insurance, um, amount for it being a combo? Use high school, sports, and community versus the tennis courts or Frank H. Hammond, is there a difference? Uh, we cover that now, right? It, it like, the same, wouldn't it be the same type of policy? Like as far as the.
You own the land, right? So it's a landowner, you would have some liability, but for going to the lease. The school town's responsible for all the construction, all the maintenance, all the day-to-day, so. Hazardous condition existed there, uh, yes, we would be more, more than likely named in a lawsuit. But, uh, there's an indemnity provision in that lease agreement as well, where they have to take the defense of it, uh. And, you know, it's more than likely gonna be a maintenance issue.
Got it. Thank you.
Which they're responsible. But you would be named as you do on the land.
Okay.
And again, this is an arrangement where the, the town is. Leasing this land for these tennis courts to be built on town property. In order to help them, um, keep their services close to the schools, but they're adding a new, uh, activities. Sports complex and where these tennis courts are now.
I think they have, I don't wanna speak for them, but I think they have plans for the space between the middle school and the high school. And I think they're, I don't know if those plans have been finalized yet, but in order to, to go forward with any plans, they, they need to have those tennis courts. Out of the way.
Again, I think this is a great opportunity and a great cooperation between the school town and the town, uh, the. Community park has become a campus of community activity. And I think, uh, by sharing softball fields, sharing baseball fields, uh, we've shared the tennis courts over the last thirty, forty years. So again, this is a continuation of a good cooperation between, uh, the school town and the town, and I, I think it's a good, good opportunity for us to. Continue that cooperation further.
And back in the days, that's where the tennis courts worked, for putting them back.
And again, these tennis courts will be available on off-hours to the residents of the town. So, any other comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin. Counselor Hopper. Counselor Gardner. Counselor Peterson. Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item H, a purchase of a pickup truck.
Uh, Public Works is requesting the purchase of pickup truck, uh, for the new director. Uh, they went out and got the required quotes, um, and they are recommending the purchase of a twenty twenty four Chevy Silverado.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion, uh, to approve one twenty twenty four Chevrolet twenty five hundred Silverado. Crew cab in the amount of seventy thousand eight hundred and thirty eight thousand, thousand dollars and seventy six cents from garbage Chevrolet.
I second that. Oh, hang on, I put, I think you, seventy thousand eight hundred and thirty eight dollars. That's the number, right?
Seventy thousand eight hundred and thirty eight dollars, I'm sorry.
Seventy six cents.
Just clarification, thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments?
Second.
We need a second. Any more discussion?
No.
No. Please call the roll.
Buy a pickup truck then. Counselor Schinkin. Counselor Hopper. Counselor Gardner. Counselor Peterson. Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item A, which is purchase of a tandem dump truck.
So this is to replace a dump truck that is from two thousand and eight. It is a long overdue replacement. Um, staff went through Sourcewell, which is a company that handles all the bidding, uh, so they don't have to go through that bidding process. But the truck itself will be more than a year before it comes in from the time they were told. But from the time council approves it, so it's still gonna be a while before we get it. The existing unit four sixty will be traded in. Today, they're telling us ten thousand dollars. By the time it actually gets traded in, they might change that, as we've seen happen a number of times.
Sure, because we're gonna continue to use it.
So council's asked to approve the purchase of the new dump truck.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a new two thousand, or two thousand twenty six tandem dump truck from National Auto Fleet Group. And WA Jones with a total Sourcewell price of two hundred and sixty of thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Which includes a ten thousand dollar trade introduction for the existing unit four sixty.
I'll second. We have a motion, we have a second.
Further questions, comments? I just wanna make a comment that I think this is prudent. We need to keep our fleet up in good condition. We wanna make sure that we can handle being snow plowing, uh, digging, excavation, hauling materials. And I think the folks over on Beverly saw that we had our trucks lined up, and it was just like a professional operation with trucks. Rolling, getting filled up, taken to Public Works, emptied, and brought back. So I think, and again, a year away, that's is. My understanding, they checked a lot of sources, and many others were two years away or could not give us a date for production. So I think this is a prudent, prudent thing to do. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin. Counselor Hopper. Counselor Gardner. Counselor Peterson. Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Takes us up to item J. Twenty twenty four curb and gutter removal and replacement.
We have a few locations in town where the urban gutter is such that there is. Some serious puddling at the base of driveways, then it ices over. some serious puddling at the base of driveways, then it ices over. Um attempts were made to repair it. Yeah, went to S D H, asked them to design what needed to happen. Uh they then went and sought folks in order to get the work, and that's being presented to you here tonight. There was some concern about the finding of when the work could get done because of the weather and as we're getting closer and closer to the more unpredictable and cold weather. Um staff got assurances that the work can be done on the, on the week of Thanksgiving.
Well, I'd like to make that motion, approve milestone contractors that were incorporated for a total cost of eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for the twenty-twenty-four curb and gutter removal and replacement project as recommended by S E H.
I'd second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. It takes us up to item K, the public works service agreement for the fuel tanks and the pump inspection.
So there are underground storage tanks and for the fuel and the fuel pump system, um and they last year, we started having a monthly walk-around inspection of that area to be sure that things were in compliance. Uh and this is extending that contract for another year.
We have a motion.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the service agreement quote from B and K Equipment to provide a monthly walkthrough inspection of the town's fuel tanks. The cost of is one hundred and twenty-nine dollars monthly for a total cost of one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars from August two thousand twenty-four through July two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions, comments? Again, this is being environmentally uh smart and also uh required by government uh regulations. Yes.
You're not required to have the monthly inspection, but it is, it keeps us on top of things so that we are sure that we're, we be in compliance.
And I'm sure we're we're required to have some sort of inspection, and we want to be in compliance.
We want to be in compliance.
All right, I have, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. There any reports?
You know, the only I'd like to mention is uh the transportation, the T O D Subcommittee will be meeting on November thirteenth at ten a.m. on a Zoom call. I'm attending that meeting.
All right, any other reports?
Chairman, I would like to announce I'm doing my councilman night out at the Munster Library on November uh nineteenth, starting at six-thirty, and all are welcome.
Other comments? Reports? Takes us up to portfolio reports. Any reports? Announcements, all town council meetings will be held at seven P M. unless otherwise noted. The next, uh November eighteenth will be the regular town council meeting and regular redevelopment commission meeting. I'm looking for a adjournment, so moved?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. That takes us up to our next meeting. That'll just be a few minutes. I'd like to call the uh redevelopment commission meeting to order the regular meeting for November seventh. I'll ask the clerk treasurer to please call the roll.
Commissioner Schinkin?
Here.
Commissioner Hopper?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Nellens?
Here.
And our lead exiled newly re-elected school board member, John Castro. Congratulations.
Thank you, and I was gonna say, you guys might be stuck with me for another four years.
I'd be welcome then.
Hi, what's gonna happen?
You're welcome.
I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be here.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, that takes us up to the open to the public. Same or uh rules and regulations as we have for the main meeting. If there's anyone that would like to come forward and address the old, the redevelopment commission, this would be the time to do that. This is open to the public for the redevelopment commission. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, we'll close the open to the public. That takes us to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
The second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes. There's no old business, no new business. Any reports? No reports, announcements, call for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second.
All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
That'll see. You know what? Straight from work. I said we get around. Congratulations. Over the years, it's been two years.
You need a picture of something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You want to take the picture, you want to stand in front of Joe and President Nellens, okay? And I can save your picture. Okay. Thank you for coming.
Funny, so it might be blurred.
Oh.
I don't, I don't know how to fix it.
Okay, but if it's, if it's blurry, it's okay?
Be okay.
I'm gonna see the road or not. Your cohort's random.
It's a little bit blurry.
Yeah, it's crazy, crazy. That work? What's that, right?
Okay, well, thank you very much, okay? You're welcome. You're welcome at the class.
But it's the tier one.
You know what, I do.
I mean. I have no problem.
All right, well, certainly.
Take it easy. All right, thanks for coming.